Okay, we'll call the March 22 meeting of the Planning Commission order will begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sidoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the March 1 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
There are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. Under old business, all four items will remain tabled this evening, so we'll begin with item five under new business. Miscellaneous review of a transfer of a conditional use permit at 8694 Mentor Avenue. Guys with the clean cars are here.
Not yet, but we're coming. Hello, thank you for having us tonight. Glenn Moss with Cardinal Auto Wash, here to transfer the conditional use permit for the drive-through beverage store, which is in the front of the property. So that's what we're looking to do tonight with that.
So the only thing we're dealing with at this point is the transfer of the CUP. Is that correct?
First item, yes. Number five.
Well, we're seeing, what about the materials?
That'll go to the next item.
Sorry.
So Larry, anything the city wants to add, or Kathy, anything the city wants to add?
No.
Okay. Anything you want to add?
Nope.
Any problems with existing CUP?
No.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Jess, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. That was an easy one for you.
Absolutely.
Okay, item six, architectural review of a drive-through facility 8694 Mentor Avenue. Now we'll talk about the buildings.
Absolutely. So in our, the final plan review meeting that we had, we discussed having the rendering made for the drive-through beverage store up front to show the materials that matched the existing, well, the new car wash that will be in place. So the same materials that we were talking about with the car wash in the back, the same red siding and the stone here, dismissed those. So the stone and the siding that we talked about on the back building, we'd just like to bring it to the front building as well.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Mr. Varga?
I have one question. I have two items I want to talk about. Is it just the lighting in here, or is that red not red anymore? It looks, it looks almost brown in here. Is it still red? I mean, I'm...
Still the same red I had before.
No, I understand. Right now it looks brown. Am I wrong?
Lighting?
Is it just the lighting, the fluorescent lighting in here? All right, well, let's, that's what we approved before. I'm not, that's not my, it just does, it looks, doesn't look like it looked before, but, okay. It may, we have new lighting, maybe that's actually affecting it.
Yeah.
That's the minor thing. The one thing I would, I'm looking at the elevations, and there's a man door in the front of the building. Is that for customers to use?
No, that's, that's the way for us to access the actual building when we get there to open up. That's the only man door that's on.
So it's not public access?
That is correct.
Okay, because I was thinking about making that the same as the glass doors in the back. I mean, a single door, but, but making it look the same as the doors in the back. I guess if it's not a public entrance, then I, I'll not concern myself. What about the other two sides, well, the, the west side of the building? We don't see it in the elevation. Is there any characteristics on that side? Anything at all?
There's no doors, no windows.
No doors, no windows, and in the back it looks the same. It's got a door in the middle, and is there a man door in the back?
There's no man door, just the garage door.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
And the samples that were brought this evening.
The samples brought to the meeting.
Second.
You identify the samples for the administration, please. Are there numbers on there? Are there codes on there?
I didn't have, I mean, I got the siding code here. I don't have the stone one, no.
Okay, but, so you can leave that. Larry, do you want to see that with you?
Let me see, we're good.
Okay. Moving to second, and I'll do everything.
Okay. Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. So why don't you give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do there?
Okay. As we had, about a year ago, actually, we came in front of committee to propose at that time a sort of different rendition. Classic put the project on hold, and then they decided to get it back going again and made some modifications to it. So the, overall, the front of the building is very similar to what was originally proposed and what we had came through the last time on, of Ozzy taking the existing showroom down and putting it, bolting a whole brand-new showroom onto the building, and then also still doing a new service bay addition to the back of the building. The only, it's different on this plan versus what was originally submitted. The original metal we did had a service drive addition that came off the side of the building here. Classic went back to Mazda corporate, and they were able to talk to Mazda not having to do that, and actually to keep the existing service drive as is today, which helped to free up the parking coming through the area instead of having this, the bump out that kind of eliminated a lot of parking, and then the flow was, did not work out good at all on that. So overall, then the site's pretty well what it was previously. And then on the... So overall, the front of the, the building still looks as it did, did before. Like I said, Ozzy, you don't have the service drive addition off the side of the building. And then coming down to the side of the building over here, which would be on the south, it still looks exactly the same. And then Ozzy, as we're keeping the existing entrance to the service drive, we're just dressing it up per what Mazda wants it to be. And then the opposite side of the building's pretty well staying to what it originally was before. So all this is basically based upon the new image criteria that Mazda corporate has put together.
So what's the, what's the car on the second floor?
The car on the second floor in the front, floor plan here, it'll show it better. Mazda's big thing is having what they call the jewel box, which is right here, will be the south, west corner of the building. That, within here, they have a four-post lift, and what it allows them to, when you look at from the streets, it allows them to be, have a car up in the air like this. So the, on that, we have the lift there, where the car will be up in the air. That's the, sort of, one of the main branding, brand elements that Mazda is making all the dealerships incorporate.
Does even any concern on that? Is that signage?
Uh, we're going to take a close look at that, but it, it depends on where exactly it's positioned as to whether or not it constitutes signage. So we'll take a look at that as, as part of that administrative review, and we'll certainly work very diligently with the dealership. We, we understand that there are constraints on, on what they can or can't do, and obviously, though, that, we'll, we'll find a way to work, make it, ensure it's compliance with our code. Thank you.
Got you. Any other questions? Mr. Varga, did you have a question?
Um, well, one question is, what happens underneath, when this car is lifted up on a lift, what happens underneath in the building? Do you put another car underneath it too?
Yeah, then you're putting our car underneath it, or have no cars, and they can walk in and be able to hook the other side of the one up in the air.
Well, my, my only real reaction to this, and, you know, this all looks fine, except I have a somewhat sensitivity to the color. Black, black. Is that a Mazda thing, that it's black like that?
Yeah, all, all the colors, as you see, those are straight from Mazda's criteria.
I only bring the, to the attention of the committee here that last week we voted down a building that had black on it because it was black, just because it's non-conforming to any kind of association with any adjacent buildings, or it's kind of an unnatural color relative to the environment. Do they ever consider, like, knocking it down, you know, gray, like to a gunmetal gray or something that's not so severe?
The white and black is their corporate colors now. The previous...
So Mazda's driving this?
That's correct. Yeah, actually, too, Mazda's previous color scheme is, I'm sure you saw some areas when they had, it was like orange and yellow and blues that were on the buildings. I know over in, I think it was over on the west side, the one Mazda, and I think also too, there was a Mazda over, I think at Delvedine, there's got that, the previous sort of color scheme that they had. And at that time, they had the jewel box, but they had all these other extra colors they did. So then they reevaluated and analyzed the new scheme that they got.
Well, and the nice thing about the black, so the black, when it's, when it's used in a way that it's completely comprehensively used, it kind of does take, the, the building takes a certain character to it, right? When a building is all black, or it's the dominant color. In this case, you know, you've kind of got the jewel box, and then a few very, very select moments where they kind of frame it out in black, and then the predominant rest of the building really is the white metal panel and glass. So I think what's, it, it tends to balance against the lighter colors in the glass. So it's, it's, while it is a, it is a, you know, black building is a black building, but at the same time, it's, it's not, it's a little bit erring because of the way it's selectively used. At least that, that would be how, how we look at it.
And, and you really don't have any leeway in this based on the directions you get from Mazda?
No, they're pretty specific.
I mean, I understand the position you're in.
So we should let Mazda write the code? Right? Is that what we're saying?
No, I think, I mean...
I mean, it's, it becomes a take it or leave it proposition, right?
And, and it would be, it'd be a question of, you know, are you, to change a brand color would be a pretty impossible conversation. I can't speak for Mazda, but I think you can. But to be careful about how color is selectively used, I think, is something that, that, that one can do, and I think that this, this has done that, in that you don't have, you know, there, if you look, there's only really one location where a large portion of the black, and it really is that the jewel box, goes above about, probably 10 or 12 feet. So it's all kept kind of low, the base is a little heavier at that point, which is consistent with, you know, a lot of buildings tend to do that. So it's, I can understand the sensitivity to having black on it, but I think it's been selectively used in a way that it does end up looking nice. And the contrast to the white is, is something that ends up being, I mean, that's kind of the, the whole intent of the, of the black package.
And the black is always on a painted, factory painted metal panel?
Right, yeah.
From the same manufacturer, all the details? So that it's actually going to be the same black?
Yes. Consistent with what was submitted last time. The colors are all the...
The, the black and the white are the same.
That's correct.
Metal panel is what was previously presented.
Yeah, but now we're, now we're in the architectural review component, so that's why the questions are coming up.
Sure, sure.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Sidoti?
Thank you. What is the finish of this black color, like satin, high gloss, flat?
It's got, it's a gloss.
It's a gloss? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Zeeman, how do we, how do we vote considering the, the car on the second floor? How do you want to resolve that? I mean, I don't want to approve it necessarily until you are comfortable with the approval process.
No, again, it's, that's not an architectural element, that, in terms of an exterior architectural element. It's locations, proximity to the window, it, again, it's, it's just not an issue relative to what it's...
Is that something we need to be concerned with?
Correct. It's clearly, if they were going to mount it, you know, on the front of the building, then we'd probably have a, you know, conversation about that. But obviously, it's on the interior, it's an interior element. Whether or not the, there, there's some conflict with the sign code is, is an issue for the administration to address at a separate day. And that's something that we'll take a close look at, but it's, it's hard from that rendering to really reach any conclusions at this time.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertain a motion?
I'll move. I'll move for approval. The conditions outlined in the, is it six conditions outlined by administration?
Is there a second?
No.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
I'm going to preface my no vote with the fact that I don't think Mazda ought to dictate our color schemes in the city. I realize you guys are handcuffed, so I'm going to vote no, but it passes five of two, so you're in good shape. Next item on the agenda. Item eight, final site plan, architectural review of industrial building at 9395 Pine Cone.
Good evening.
My name is Don Dietrich. I'm with Emmy Osborn Construction Company, and...
Richard Weber with Weber Design.
And we're here to present to you the building we proposed to build for South Shore Controls in Mentor.
We've been through the staff report. I think we addressed the issue of, addressed the issue of the 210-foot-long wall. The issue of outdoor storage has gone away because we're not going to do it. That part of the building has disappeared.
Good.
Steel.
Wow.
What happened?
There you go. So it's paying off already, huh?
All the storage will be inside the building.
It's paying off, no?
It's paying off already.
Yeah, there it goes. Right. So... We, we're, we're seeing our efforts to the owner to stay within the budget that we originally quoted on the job. Because of the fluctuations in construction materials since the first of the year, most recently since a couple weeks ago when the tariffs were announced, prices have, have increased 15 to 20 percent, particularly on steel. Lumber's up, concrete's up, so in order to stay where we told the owner that we could be, it became necessary to eliminate the 6,000 feet of the exterior storage. And you'll also notice that we modified the height of the building. We had a second floor on our preliminary presentation to you, and the second floor aspect has been eliminated completely. We have one elevation now through the whole building.
The base building is, the back building is all at one height.
So if you need an expansion, you're going to expand off the side or the back?
East.
We have the room on the site, that's what we have to do.
Okay.
Okay. The upstairs expansion was for offices, which they will desperately need, so we will expand into the shop, and then expand the shop to the east.
Got you.
To the east.
Okay.
And the, the engineers' comments, we have no problem with. There's, there's no problem implementing that. Some of the stuff has already been provided to the city. We have the low calculations into the engineering department. We've shown the floodplain map on our site improvement drawings.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Varga?
I wish we had seen this in our packet here, because I, I see some variation between what this picture shows and what we have in this document here, besides the height change. And I just want clarification, so let me just try to figure this out. This here shows that the base and the area above the window of the administrative portion of the building is brick.
Yes.
Is that brick shown there?
Yes.
Yes, it's all brick.
Okay, it's all brick, all right. So, but it looks like it's painted, or is that the color of the brick?
No, it's brick. He's got a brick sample here.
This is the, this is the product that we're going to be using. It's an interstate unit, and it has a name on it, Larry.
And the... Walnut L4 batch board.
And, and when I look at that elevation, the one you had here there, it looks like the, that color is the same in the back as in the front.
Yes.
So you're using the same material?
All the same material, yeah.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So that's good. So that's kind of, so the real change, and I like the fact that you've got more glass in that administrative area, it looks more appropriate. I appreciate your responding to the comments the last time. That's all, that's fine. I, you answered my questions.
Okay, anything else?
We have reviewed the four conditions stipulated on the staff review, and we have no problem implementing those.
Kathy, anything the administration wants to add?
No, I just would like to point out, I think, we added an item three regarding the landscape plan. There's some specific items noted in the staff report, and I just wanted to draw attention for the applicant to the one item that the east wall of the building, the office portion between that, that building wall and the truck loading area, would like to see some landscaping, so...
That's not a problem.
We're going to do that, yeah. We've actually pushed the office building another six foot back, so we have room to do more landscaping.
So do we need to put that in as a condition? Do you want it as a condition? It's in there as a condition now?
I said, I, we noted in item three and specific items noted in the staff report, if you wanted to call it out even more...
I think so, just so there's no confusion in subsequent date.
Do you have a sample of the color of the metal panel system?
I don't know if you can, it is identified, I can pass it to you.
Okay, go ahead.
It's a...
On my toes.
Trying to get it over here, so I don't...
And it looks like the, the panels on top of the administrative area that shields the mechanical units, it's the same color?
That's it.
Same panel?
That's it.
Now, let me ask this question, I should have asked this before, I'm sorry I didn't. Clearly, you're shielding the, the mechanical units above the administrative area with those panels. I, I don't see any other mechanical units on the roof. Is that because you can't see them?
No, it's because, because they won't be there.
There's nothing, yeah.
Because they won't be there is even a better answer.
Yeah.
Now, that's one of the, that's one of the things that happened with reducing the cost of the building, the air conditioning on that roof went away. Gone.
Okay, that answers that question the best where there, you can. No units, all right.
So another benefit.
Okay. Anything else? We'll make that one condition specific, Kathy, right?
Yes.
Landscaping along the...
On the east office wall, between that wall and the, the truck turning area, yes.
Is that okay?
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. What, the...
Landscaping between the east office wall and the truck.
Yeah, there's going to be a little bit of a patio. He wants room for the people to go out, maybe have a stick around, I don't know.
What?
Eat lunch. Eat lunch.
I know.
And it'll be, there'll be landscaping.
So with that in mind, we'll entertain a motion?
Here's the glass.
Mr. Varga?
Motion to approve with, was that four or three? Four?
Four.
There's four.
The conditions, four conditions.
Four conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. And Mr. Weber, Mr. Dietrich, you'll give the sample, building material sample to Larry?
Yes. We'll take care of that, yep.
Thank you.
Director's report, Kathy?
Thank you. You want one of those? All right. I got it.
I got it.
Which one would you like to tackle first?
whichever one you're more comfortable with.
Well, let's, let's talk about the, the director's report regarding permitted hotel uses in bed and breakfast establishments.
Okay.
This has been an item that Mr. Trabell pointed out has been discussed since 2003, on and off, at times, and at least the bed and breakfast portion, we found some previous drafts introduced as far back as 2003. But there has been recent interest again in the possibility of, of having a bed and breakfast establishment. And there's also a, a need in the definition section to elaborate and clarify the definition for hotels, and extended stay hotels, and how they are currently used in the city, and how we want to see them enforced with more stringent standards. I will defer to our, our law director here on the definitions of, of the hotels as they were derived from state statute, and he had worked on these specifically, I believe, last year?
Before the...
Oh, some time ago. But that, the, this, we decided to group these together, made more, it made sense, and then we had outlined the different districts that we felt that the bed and breakfast would be, we felt appropriate with a conditional use permit, and then also clarifying or correcting the name change of motel, from motels to hotel transient. Did you want anything else?
Anything you'd like to share with us, Mr. Zeeman?
Sure. Correct. The, the state issues various licenses and building code for, for different classification of hotels. So the higher revised code defines hotels in different ways, and the, the main variation is, is how they're outfitted, whether or not they've got facilities that would allow for some housekeeping, you know, food preparation, things of that nature. And, and they, and the properties obviously get marketed, and they've got a specific target, you know, based upon that business plan. So with the current code, it just says hotel, motel has no meaning really anymore, really hotel is, is what we're looking at in terms of the revised code. So with our current code, which just says hotel, well, that's, there's no limitations on that. We're not looking at the subsets of the types of facilities that, that fall within that general umbrella term. So a transient hotel is, is just that. It's for a person's, it's, it's not going to be outfitted for any type of kitchen facilities or anything that would allow for some type of longer-term occupancy. Transient by, by definition is, is less than 30 days. Whereas if you're looking at an extended stay or a residence-in, that's where we're getting in the type of facilities, where the idea being that they're for a little bit perhaps long-term, longer-term occupancy. And again, they're outfitted differently as well. they're outfitted differently as well. There's also something called an SRO facility, it just stands for single-room occupancy, that's another subset. Our code doesn't address it at all currently, not that it needs to, it's just, again, another species of this type of housing establishment. In terms of some other facilities, we have been having a little bit of interplay with Airbnb and some of those other cloud-based services, and so we feel that, one complaint that came to my attention relative to a, a single-family detached house that was being rented via Airbnb, that came, complaint came in through some of the neighbors. We did address that via the renting of rooms portion of our code, and, but I think it's probably time, given the popularity of those services, that we maybe more specifically address them, just to, just to tackle that issue. And then relative to bed and breakfasts, I know that's something that's been floated around periodically over the years, and again, we can work on that definition and narrow it up a little bit, but, you know, where, maybe appropriate location for that, size of the parcel, size of the structure, appropriate parking fields, things of that nature, are all obviously policy choices. So why is this important? Well, it may not be, if, if it's okay that any subset of hotel is, you know, can locate in any zoning district in the city, then it may not be something that, that requires any additional regulation. There is some sense out there, I don't have numbers for it, but there is a lot of feedback, I think, that city officials get from members of the corporate community, that, you know, our bed space here in Mentor may be a little underserved, and that transient hotels, that better serve not just the needs of, well, the needs of the business community, where they've got persons coming in, be they salespersons, employees coming in for training or what have you, needing good bed space, and then our citizens as well, for, for, you know, visitors and family that may, may not be able to be accommodated in their homes. So we think that there's probably an underserved aspect to the marketplace here in Mentor relative to transient hotels. The residence-in, the extended stay, that business model now is, picked up a little bit of steam, in part perhaps because we don't have enough rental units in the marketplace. They, they do seem to be being marketed as an alternative to leasing an apartment, or leasing, you know, a, a house or something of that nature, because they are suitable for persons to, to live on for some extended period of time. And, and that's fine for, for that, it fits a, a specific need, but the concern is, you know, we only have just so much space, and how to better allocate space moving forward so that, one, some of the existing transient hotels would not be converted then to an extended stay, for example, and then also for any future proposals. Just so it's clear that where the city is moving forward is, we, we need additional transient bed space, we seem to have enough, you know, residence-in or extended stay to serve the needs of this marketplace. So those are some of the policy, you know, discussions that need to take place moving forward, and, and again, where some of these things may fit. Interchanges versus more centrally located within the corporate limits and things of that nature, so. And so those are some of the planning and policy issues, of course, that have to inform whatever recommendations ultimately are made. Thank you.
Anything else? I want to interject one comment here. Problem I have with some of the extended stay hotels is that they advertise themselves in newspapers as an alternative to apartments, and I'm not sure that's the definition of what we want to see for the extended stay hotels. I think, I think what they've become is they've become an apartment without the security deposit. So my comment, for what it's worth, I'll throw that out there. So Kathy, how would you like to see us pursue this? You want some input back from the commission, not necessarily this evening, but at some point? So if you have thoughts on this, back to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then we could, we would like to, when you're ready, to schedule a hearing on this text amendment, when, when we feel it's ready to move forward.
Okay, so commissioners, I'm going to ask you if you have comments or input you'd like to give to the administration, direct them back to Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, just, and again, yes, please do direct them to Ms. Mitchell, direct them to myself, but do again, be careful so that you don't, you know, respond all amongst yourselves, because then that starts becoming a discussion of the public business via email. So just, just try to make sure that it's, you're not accidentally, inadvertently responding to your fellow commission members with any questions or comments, just.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
As far as bed and breakfasts, has there been a problem, or is, you mentioned there was a complaint about someone doing bed and breakfast?
No, Airbnb, yeah.
Airbnb, well, I mean, I, I've always thought that if someone like my neighbor starts running out his house as a B and B, is, is not the parking one of the main issues? Do we have a requirement for parking for, for a bed and breakfast?
Well, that's one of the questions moving forward. Obviously, parking has to be on an improved surface, ideally that, that doesn't place, take place on the front lawn, but there may, there may have to be some additional accommodation for parking spaces. Yes, I suppose they could park in the driveway, but that doesn't seem, you know, a suitable, suitable way to handle guest accommodations. So odds are, there'd probably be some, you know, turnoffs or something.
Improvements that'll be required.
It would seem that, it would seem as a practical matter that that would be the case. I suppose if a B and B was just, you know, one or two rooms, it could be potentially avoided. If it's four, that, that probably would be much more difficult.
But there hasn't been a, a great number of complaints or any, you know, ongoing issues with parking and B and Bs?
We don't have any B and Bs.
We don't have any B and Bs.
They're not permitted currently.
They're not permitted.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Traditionally, B and Bs are located in older converted residential structures with some historical significance. And Kathy wrote in her report, there's been a growing interest, discussions about potential B and Bs. Do we have that kind of inventory in manner to entertain these?
It's, it's limited, we've lost a lot of, you know, back in the day when I was a kid, I could have, could have named some properties, but they, they've fallen into disrepair, and many of them have come down over the years, unfortunately, so they're, they're out there. Whether or not they're a side street, for example, is a suitable location for a B and B, obviously, that's a, you know, planning and policy decision that needs to be made on some of the main, you know, avenues in the city. Again, here and there, there's a, there's an older structure that may be suitable for it, but, but yeah, for better or worse, our limit, our inventory is, is probably fairly limited at this juncture.
Thank you.
So Mr. Zeman, how would you like to see us handle this? We're going to give some input back to Kathy, and then you guys will have some dialogue, I would assume?
Right, right, we definitely want to, want to get some, and to the extent there's additional questions as well, it, it, obviously, and particularly with bed and breakfasts, that, that may be conditionally permitted in as a residential district, again, where, are there aerial, should, should we be looking at specific sized parcels, for example? Are we looking for structures where there's a good setback, so that the neighbors aren't adversely affected? I guess just, there's a lot of practical issues. So to the extent we can sort of narrow down the types of structures that would be appropriate to even apply, that I think could be beneficial, just, just, you know, rather than go through a CUP process and, and, and have someone with a structure and a location that's wholly unsuitable for it, if we can identify some of those, you know, elements that are just non-starters and get those in the code, then hopefully the applications that do come forward are, are things that, you know, warrant some serious consideration.
So do you guys have a timeframe you're interested in?
If you want to, if you want to, we could even just have a final discussion at the next meeting, unless there's still, you know, need for additional discussion, then at that time-
If the individuals get, if the individuals on the commission get you some information, concerns that they may have in the next week or 10 days, then that gives you time to digest it before our next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And we may need to do some research to answer those questions, and that's why I think a little bit of a lead time would be very beneficial.
One of the choices could be that we maintain the, the B and Bs not being permitted.
True.
That is still, that's also one of the choices.
Of course.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
If we would move forward with B and Bs, and given the unique creation of what it is, five rooms or less, six rooms or less, are they subject to both local codes and state codes, or would it be mostly local codes?
Well, they're certainly subject to building and fire codes, but they, they fall below the threshold for a hotel, so they're not getting licensed, they're not getting a hotel license.
They don't need a food service license, or?
That's a good question, I would, that's something I couldn't answer off the top of my head, and probably why we need to get some answers to you. Odds are the answer's yes, but that's just a, that's just an educated guess.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, we'll, given the next week or 10 days, some information to Kathy, if you have information, not necessary if you don't have any information to provide anything, and then that gives you some time to digest it internally and come back with some thoughts for our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Done. Next item.
The next director's report pertains to fences and hedges, specifically section 1165.02, as well as the definitions in section 1127.01. This has also been an item that has been kind of tossed around for some time internally, administratively, based on, you know, just in, in practice, using the existing code and finding some, some holes, if you will, in the current, in the current regulations. So we've made some clarification to the definition of, of yard, front side and rear yard, and also defined a fence, and then provided some both general regulations, as well as regulations specific to either the residential districts or the commercial and industrial districts, and made specific standards with, with regard to either the type of fence, or the height of the fence, and of course, then the location. Most, last but not least, under the permit requirements we've made, taken a strong position on the need for a survey, unless the proposed fence is clearly off the, well, in the, specifically the rear property line, by at least 10 feet. There are some instances where we feel that, you know, you know, so maybe either for a dog run, or something very small in nature, if it's clearly off that property line, the, the need for the survey isn't, isn't as, isn't as critical. But most people do want to put them on the property line, which is why we feel, you know, since there's often a dispute between neighbors of where that property line is, requiring a survey.
Commissioners, any questions that you can offer this time for the administration? Something you're looking, the same type of input for?
Yes.
Okay. So if you have input on this, commissioners, get it back to the administration in a timely manner, so we can move forward with this. Anything else?
That's it.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
I'd like to make one statement. How many times has the Loews project been tabled? Isn't tonight the third time it's been tabled?
Actually, Chairman Snow asked me, well, a related question, and, and prior to the meeting, and I indicated that because corporate has just recently gotten involved in this process, they weren't aware of the original application, they had asked for at least one more meeting to, to provide some sort of follow-up, so I had asked the chairman if we could at least grant them that opportunity to come back at the next meeting.
So you think they're coming back on the-
That is the, that was the intent, yes.
The reason I brought it up, Mr. Chairman, is if you go out there, the outdoor storage, in my opinion, and you can look at it for yourself, I think it's out of control, because if you drive in to the east side of the building, there's storage all in the open parking lot, on both sides of the parking lot. If you're coming down Old Johnny Cake, and you just look to the back of the building, from the west to the east is full of product, lawnmowers and shingles and you name it. And it's, and I checked it out at the beginning of the month, when I thought we were going to be at that meeting, and I checked it out yesterday, it's doubled. There's this stuff all over the place. I just think it's unfair, because we have to be consistent, if we're going to, you know, push this on other businesses and establishments, we got to make sure we get this under control. Thank you.
Agreed. Anything else? Got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Done. Kathy, your rights are-